Well, good evening and welcome to the October 26th City of Tuolton City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have a few items on the agenda. Luckily, nothing is super controversial for a change. A lot of good things on the agenda that's nice to talk about versus having, you know, very heated issues. So we'll go ahead and the first thing we have tonight are announcements and our first announcement is a proclamation declaring November 8th through 14th, 2020 as Veterans Appreciation Week. Do we have anyone representing the veterans? If not, I'll take care of it. I saw Sarah here a minute ago, but she might not be here for this. And people still trying to get in. All right. So I guess I'll just run with it. All right. So unfortunately, due to COVID this year, we had to cancel our Veterans Breakfast on Veterans Day. Veterans Breakfast at the Poll Center has been run every year since 2012. It's very well attended. In the last few years I've been going, it's well over 100 veterans attend. And it's one of the biggest social events that I see at the Poll Center in addition to Meals on Wheels. And in the last few years, Sarah Shepherd has led the charge on this and has a terrific job. We're coordinating it, getting everybody there, coordinating volunteers, the fun part, giving away prizes at the end. But this year she had a shift and what she did with her staff is reach out to the veterans community and ask any veteran who would like to have a yard sign delivered to recognize their service that they talked to Sarah or email Sarah. And they would get a sign that they could put in their yard. As far as I heard, about 50 signs so far have been requested. Yesterday, I believe was the last day, but Sarah might cut you some slack if you haven't got your request in. The Sarah to have a yard sign recognizing your service. Those folks who have met a lot of our veterans, a lot of names, I'm gonna read up some names here, just pop the top of my head because they're very active in the community. Dale Potts is, you know, usually helps coordinate with Sarah, the Veterans Breakfast, in addition to the Memorial Day Cemetery Services. Nor Murray, well known for being one of the pilots of President's Helicopter way back in his day. Mr. Joe Lipscomb from the Korean War. Ed Casey, lifelong volunteer here in Tuolton. George Bowlesby, and a lot of us know the trumpeter, Martin Kirrell, who does a terrific job of playing tax at these services. I also want to recognize the Tuolton VFW auxiliary here in town who helps coordinate these events for veterans. Again, if you haven't had a chance to ask Sarah Shepherd for a yard sign as a veteran, please do. I'm sure she might have some leftover for you to grab. I also want to thank the, I call the Tuolton Times, now this is the Beaverton Times, wherever it is now. The Pamplum article that was written by Ray Pitts, recognizing what we are doing here in town for our veterans. Every year we do recognize them between this event and the Memorial Day Services at the Green, at the Winona Cemetery. I want to thank all veterans for their services throughout the years. I remember last year, I think was noted, 102-year-old veteran was at the breakfast and I was looking forward to seeing him this year, but hopefully I'll see him next year. When we're in a post-COVID world. So with that, let me go ahead and read the proclamation. Declaring November 8th through 14th, 2020, Veterans Appreciation Week in the City of Tuolton. Whereas the City of Tuolton has always supported our military and veteran population, including becoming a Purple Heart City. And whereas we want to make sure our military veterans are clearly aware that we value their service to our nation, our state, and most especially our city of Tuolton. And whereas Tuolton has a large property, a large population of veterans, including leaders awarded for valor and Gold Star families. And whereas Tuolton appreciates the sacrifices of all our military veterans, combat veterans, the families of the killed in action residents, as well as the personal sacrifice that been made by our servicemen and women and their families while defending our freedom. And whereas Tuolton wishes to express its deepest appreciation and honor to each and every one of our veterans. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of City of Tuolton, Oregon, that November 8th through 14th, 2020 shall be Veterans Appreciation Week. The City Council hereby encourages the residents and businesses of the City of Tuolton to show their appreciation for the sacrifices that our military veterans have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned, especially during this week. Introduced and adopted this 26th day of October, 2020. Again, I want to thank all those veterans. I really miss having the get-together at breakfast and hearing all your stories and, you know, always, and always, you know, making the point that, you know, Army is the branch of service that is preferred and the best, even above the Marines and Navy. I know I'm gonna hear about that, but every year I do it that hurrah for the Army, the rest of you guys, you know, you support us. Anything else for any comments from council? All right.
You left, you left out the Air Force, which my, my father was involved with the Air Force.
Yep, Air, you know, yep, the Air Force, yep. So all veterans obviously are very, I just want to appreciate everybody's service. It's, it's not an easy life and especially recognized families, military families, especially today with these prolonged deployments overseas that are sometimes very violent and very scary for families. I very much appreciate the folks back home that support our veterans and, you know, help them remain strong. So it's not just the veterans, it's your families and their support network that need to be acknowledged also. All right. So moving on to item number two, another proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. And I am going to turn it over to Cindy Hillier and her group for this.
Good evening. Sorry, I was getting ready to film because I thought it was Paul. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So really this night is all about the youth, which is kind of standard for us. So Stand Up Tuolton, just a tiny bit of history, was formed in 2012. Stand Up actually stands for Stop Teenage Alcohol, Nicotine, and Drug Use. It pushes the acronym a little bit. I get that. And tonight, as you can imagine, in this little bit different world, our recruiting for Stand Up members has been a little unique and I am, my heart is just bursting with pride to share these incredible youth that we have here with us tonight. And actually, in an interesting way, the virtual world has given youth an opportunity who wouldn't normally get to be here because they're at swim practice or something else, an opportunity. So I'd like to thank your staff there at the city for helping someone who is not an iMovie expert, help us put that together tonight. So with that, the students that you'll hear from tonight are Corey Tingey, Sarah Shepherd, oh, excuse me, yeah, Corey. Then Olivia Jackson, Sarah Shepherd, and Ally Carseboom via video. And then Sarah Crainer and Darren Tingey to close things up tonight. So thank you for having us for our annual visit and we look forward to it. Thank you.
I'm assuming I'm up. Hi, I'm Corey Tingey and I'm just, you know, like give you a little introduction to Stand Up and what we do. I am in 10th grade and I joined Stand Up freshman year. We are a club that promotes healthy drug and alcohol-free activities for youth as well as doing service projects and other, other things promoting awareness on the effects of drugs and alcohol for teens and kids. That's really it. That's our club summed up. I think Olivia's next.
Hello, I'm Olivia Jackson. I'm a senior at Tuolton High School this year and I joined Stand Up because I have had addiction in my family and I've also just kind of always wanted to be more involved in the community and so we're all talking about different part of Stand Up's agenda. And so tonight I'm going to talk about the dispensary zoning. And so currently, the all dispensary zonings state that they must be at least 3,000 feet away from residential areas such as schools and parks. And some people are pushing to move that down to 1,000 feet. And so I'm here to give kind of a youthful perspective on why this shouldn't happen. And so one of the main things I want to talk about was actual usage with, with younger kids such as myself and Corey and Darren here as well. And so I'm gonna pull from the 2019 Oregon Healthy Teen Survey. 2017, the peer disapproval for marijuana use was at 50.6%. And the actual uses of marijuana was at 18.8%. Jumped to 2019, the peer disapproval dropped to only 46%. And marijuana use went up to 25.3%. So it jumped almost 7%. And what I draw from that is that the more people kind of break down the stigma around marijuana for youth, the more so we feel inclined to use. And so bringing the dispensaries closer to our schools and parks kind of introduced it from a younger age, which kind of makes us more comfortable around it and kind of like, oh, like it's not that big of a deal. When really, especially for youth and developing brains and people, it is. And so I feel that with bringing them closer to our areas, it will increase use. And kind of my second point I want to talk about was irresponsible drivers. And so people going to these dispensaries possibly under the influence could actually increase the dangers for young people as well. And I'm pulling from studyfinds.org. They found that 10% in Colorado after legalization marijuana, there was a 10% increase in motor vehicle accidents, accidents, as well as a 5% jump in alcohol use, which just overall makes these areas less safe for kids and teens of my age. And marijuana is accessible enough in Washington County. We have plenty of places we can go get it. I don't think that we need to bring them into our nice little residential area and closer to our youth and our teens. So thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight.
Hi, my name is Sarah Shepherd. I'm a senior at Tuolton High School. And I joined Stand Up because I think it's really important as a community and especially young people to get involved in bettering their community in any way they can. And for me, one of the ways that I saw would be really important is to try and help prevent drug and alcohol use, especially in teenagers, because I've seen some members of my family or some people I know who've gotten into like using drugs and alcohol and kind of destroyed their lives. And so I think it's really important that we work to kind of fight against that. And so with that, right now, it's Red Ribbon Week, so the largest drug prevention campaign in the nation. And so usually during Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, we post posters and we post drug facts and we talk to the elementary school and the middle schools and we work to spread awareness. But this year, obviously, we aren't able to do that. And so we're working on setting up a movie, a virtual movie watching event to watch Chris Heron's The First Day film that came out. It came out last year and it's a really good film that helps teach about his story and his use of like drugs and alcohol and how bad that was for his life to try and help spread awareness and try and bring community involvement to something that we Stand Up finds really important to keep people away from drugs and alcohol.
Hi, I'm Ally Carseboom. I'm a junior at Tuolton High School this year and I am here to talk about Stand Up's service projects and our fundraising. So our current fundraiser is a greenery one. This is for our winter. And so we're selling baskets and wreaths and different holiday-themed greenery. And so all of those funds are going to go into our service projects. And our service projects are meant to invest back into the community and help people find healthy alternatives and help the community, youth and parents and adults stay connected in a safe and health, healthy way. Especially in the times that we're having right now, it's really hard. One of our most recent service projects is partnering with Tuolton Together with our Gattitude Pumpkins. So we gave out pumpkins and like a little coloring packet with like things for elementary schoolers to do. And it was really fun and it, all the kids were really excited about it. And one of the biggest things that we are trying to help people find is value and value in themselves and living because fall and winter tend to have the highest rates of suicides. And so we're really trying to push like finding value and like finding something that you like to do, something that's worth living for so that we can get those rates down. And we want to make everyone feel as important as we feel. So that's one of our big service projects that we are trying to fundraise for right now. And so, yeah.
Sarah Crainer.
Am I up or is Sarah up?
Sarah, you must be muted, Sarah. Okay, Darren, go for it.
Okay, so something that Stand Up is doing this year to help better ourselves is we're using the curriculum from Creekside High School, which is this Friends Helping Friends. And it helps us better educate ourselves on understanding how to help ourselves and others, whether it's dealing with addiction or dealing with just standing up for ourselves. Putting in that effort into ourselves will make it so that we can have a better community and have a more sense of involvement with each other.
Sarah, are you able to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, honey.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I don't know if I interrupted you, Darren, but um I'll just add to what I think you were saying. So like Darren said of what I heard, Tigard has been having success with this thing called Safety Town. And it is an event where we kind of aim towards the younger kids of our community where we can introduce drug awareness and, you know, being safe on the road and just safe practice as, you know, they're walking around the community. And so we're looking to aim towards the younger kids because we do have a good connection with the middle school and the high school. So this would be a good way to introduce this information and this awareness to the younger group. Um, Darren, would you like to add?
So part of what we're doing with our Safety Town is helping them, the elementary level understand just kind of some key basics of what it means to be safe. And so whether it's safety on the road or safety just with drugs and alcohol, whatever it means for them to be safe is just kind of what we're trying to get at and help from a young age educate them.
So we are looking to partner with Tuolton Together to make this kind of become a reality since we know that our neighboring community has also had success with this. So we believe that this event would really positively impact parents and the younger youth in Tuolton.
Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate your time tonight and we are excited to report back when things get moving. And thank you to our Stand Up students who could make it tonight. I really appreciate you.
Thanks, Cindy, and thanks Sarah and Darren and Olivia. Am I missing anybody? There was one more person.
Yeah, Corey.
Corey just appeared off the screen here, right? I think he's, there he is on the side.
They're brothers, so they're on the same screen, yeah.
All right, cool. All right. I'll now turn it over to Paul.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to add that I've been treasurer of Tuolton Together now for six years and it's just an amazing organization and what Cindy Hillier has managed to do with first Stand Up at the high school. And then we got worked out to the middle school at Hazelbrook with Stand Up. And then, as you heard, this year we reached out to the elementary schools, including we were able to give a pumpkin to every elementary student along with a booklet and some, some things for them to work on. So the outreach has been incredible. You heard about Chris Heron. That four years ago, we brought Chris Heron in for the community. We had over 2,000 residents of Tuolton show up. And for those of you who are not familiar, he's the ex-NBA player who famously did heroin at halftime during a Boston Celtics game. And has now been a drug-free and alcohol-free. I believe he's now in his 18th or 19th year. And, and does the speaking tours and outreach into communities. And then we brought it back a second time last year. Ironically, just before COVID hit. And so a lot of work. All right. So now I'd like to, I'm honored to read the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. Proclamation declaring October 23rd, 31st, 2020, Red Ribbon Week in the City of Tuolton. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st. And whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, seniors, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Tuolton does hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Introduced and adopted this 26th day of October, 2020.
All right. Thanks, Paul. And again, thanks, Cindy, for all your work with Stand Up Tuolton, Tuolton Together. All right. Next up is public comment. So a public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council tonight regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate and terrific time to do it. Do we have anyone at the Poll Center base? Now, Base is muted.
Mayor Bubinik, this is Nicole. Beth Ditman did have a comment at the work session that I missed and didn't get read into the record. I'd like to read it on her behalf.
Please.
It says, "I appreciate Counselor Pratt and Grimes' stances on the topic. The reality is, is we need to work towards assessing a reasonable utility fee as well as levy and/or bond. There is enough work to do both in the immediate and the short term to warrant both. Please do not let the maintenance and routine needs of our community backyard be put on the budgetary back burner."
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, Mayor. There's nobody at the Poll Center or else on Zoom or public comment.
All right. Okay, that moves us on to the consent agenda. Those items in the consent agenda are considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone in council like one of those items removed from the agenda and separately heard tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda item consists, I can't talk tonight, all tongue tied. Only two items tonight on the consent agenda. Consideration approval of the City Council work session and regular meeting minutes of October 12th, 2020. And the second item is consideration approval of a new liquor license application for sushi train. Would anybody like either of those two items removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda as read.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. I'll start going through the pictures here. Counselor Morrison.
Yes.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg.
Hi.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote I also, so it's unanimous. All right. Moving on to special reports. We have two reports tonight. First one being the annual report of the Winita Poll Center Advisory Committee. And the other Sarah Shepherd shows up.
All right. Susan here.
Oh, Sarah, can you let people know how many signs there are? You mean, you've got it in the chat, veterans?
So we, we ordered 100 and we ended up with, the deadline was Sunday, but we ended up with 92 that were requested. So that was great. So we might, if nobody else requests until we deliver next week, we might just take them all to Marquee because they have a lot of veterans that they usually bring to the breakfast. And they've already requested some, but there might be more.
Right. Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. Good evening, Mayor Bubinik and members of council. My name is Sarah Shepherd and I'm the center supervisor at the Winita Poll Center. And we're here tonight to present the annual report for the Winita Poll Center. It will be presented by Susan Noack and she is the chair of the advisory committee. And I will share my screen here.
Are you ready, Sarah?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about one of my favorite places in Tuolton. As, next slide. I took over for Candace Kelly as she retired after many years of service to JPC. And our newest member in 2020 is Thea Wood. Next slide. The committee hears up, we meet every other month. And the committee hears updates from Sarah and Marilyn with year-to-date figures for attendance, programming currently and all we should, and we all share ideas for future programming and events at the center. Next slide, please. In July 2018 to July 2019 was a normal year for the center with 75,000 visits, which included day, evening, and weekend use. From July 19th to 2019 to March 2020, usage was about 50,000 with the expectation of reaching 68,000 by the end of 2020. Then the new normal set in in April, on April 1, and JPC is now virtual. Thanks to Sarah and Marilyn's technical abilities and innovation into a new way to conduct classes, the virtual fitness program has over 1,400 participants and the enrichment programs have over 630 in attendance as of September 1. Our aerobic yoga and Tai Chi classes, fitness classes, along with health and wellness, educational seminars, webinars, nutrition classes, virtual tours and trips, book club and online socia's, or to name a few. Next slide, please. We are very lucky at the center that we have partnerships like we see on the screen. As we all know, partnerships and community relationships are vital to the success of any program. As you see from the list on this slide, JPC does it well. Meals on Wheels People has been a partner for almost 40 years and the others ongoing for at least five years or longer. And two standouts are Bar Height, who has sponsored the Veterans Yoga Class on Saturdays for the past seven years and it is free to our veterans. And this year, Washington County Aging and Disability became partners and is collaborating with JPC to bring awareness and education and program support to Tuolton. And I quote from their older adult specialist who works with Sarah. "The Winita Poll Center has demonstrated strategic leadership and passionate support for the older adults they serve. We are grateful for our unique partnership with JPC as it would be challenging, be a challenge to provide support to local seniors without this trusted connection to the community." And next slide, please. Most of the benefits received by being in person at the center have been duplicated online as social engagement and interaction are the keys to combat isolation in older adults. To add to that, Sarah and Marilyn are now doing home business respecting all so, respecting all social COVID guidelines to continue the connection and they have been extremely well-received. Next slide, please. This shows part of what is active at the center in the past. It shows on the left, the Christmas art show where our seniors told a story with their art and we had a family gathering to show off all the artwork. And uh, the bottom right is the first overnight trip that the center took to the Oregon Gardens. Next slide. The staff and instructors have been flexible and creative to be able to switch gears to virtual. The consistent attendee numbers are a testament to their diligence, innovation, and dedication to JPC and its seniors. And I did a little snooping this week and uh, in Washington County, we're the only center that is active five days a week and offers the number of programs that we offer. Most of the centers are closed or offering something sporadically. So I'm really proud that our center and our, our uh, staff are taking such good care of all our seniors. Next slide, please. Several groups in the business community, churches, and youth sports groups utilize our space. In 2018 and 2019, there were 315 rentals. And from 20 July 2019 to March 2020, there were 177. Until the building was closed this year, there was a rental end or activity in the building every day of the week. Next slide. Over the past several years, the furniture, blinds, and decor has been upgraded and enhanced. This past year, 40 out of the 160 dining chairs have been reupholstered and it's an ongoing project. They get used quite a lot and have been around, I think, for eight years. So it's been time. Last slide, please. Uh, like most committees and most buildings, we have an action plan. And these are not lofty goals even in this pandemic time. We are committed to look to the future while keeping vital and current with all the 2020 challenges and changes in our lifestyles. The partnerships that have been developed are outstanding and build awareness of JPC throughout the community besides giving support when applying for grants and sponsorships. Next slide. And that concludes, and thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments for Sarah or myself?
Questions, comments, Bridget.
I wanted to thank you so much for your um, leadership and for your presentations, very educational. And I'm really grateful that there's so much going on, excuse me, during um, this time virtually because I know the need is really important for connection to combat loneliness. And finally, um, I attended a literature festival two weeks ago and one of the double AARP representatives were there talking about just the incredible impact that this um, COVID epidemic has had on our seniors. Um, and you know, it's, it's a really somber time. We've lost so many people and so many of them have been seniors. And to have a way to connect when people feel vulnerable and insecure during these times is just, um, I think it's priceless. So I just really commend all of your work and I deeply appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie.
Mayor Frank.
Well, Valerie first then.
Oh, well, yeah, I want to um, just what Bridget said, what a great job you guys do there. But Susan, I wondered if you'd speak for a moment of how Meals on Wheels People is outreach to the people that were coming to the poll center before the COVID.
Uh, what they're doing now is um, all of, our meal program has been moved um, over to Tigard. Uh, and we have volunteers that uh, deliver both Tigard and, and Tewalton. Um, all this, obviously, all the centers are closed. Um, and the production of meals every day out of our uh, main kitchen at the resource center has gone from 5,000 a day to 8,000 a day, uh, which is how much the uh, the service is needed. And we have um, uh, Meals on Wheels is doing, the managers are doing wellness checks with the, the members of each of their own uh, centers. And the resource center is doing um, virtual visits and, and more wellness checks too. So it's going really smoothly. Um, they are um, uh, our, our executive director um, has her eye on it and, and um, it's been a very smooth operation. Uh, no one has been left out and um, everyone gets contacted at least once a week, if not more. And uh, I know you will hear from them, but I may pass along myself how grateful we are for the support we get from council and in your uh, funding process. It's really appreciated. Uh, there is no uh, idea of when we'll be back in business locally as no one else knows either. So we're maintaining. Thank you for asking.
Then you were going to say something, Susan?
Oh, um, do I have time to add a comment myself?
Sure.
For this? Come on. Okay, um, when I lived at Tewalton in 2001, I did not know I was approaching senior status at the time, but I was and denied it. Uh, when I retired in 2008, um, I didn't know we had a senior center and didn't know what I was going to do with myself. And I found the senior center in 2009 and I've never left. And the reason is, I've been through a lot of changes with the center. When I started going there, it was lows and fishes. So you know how long ago that was. And then the city took over and we've been through a lot of changes and um, my second life started at the center. And uh, the reasons for that is because through all the years that I've been going there, uh, the center is inclusive. It has kindness and support and warmth for all people that enter the building, senior or not. And it makes a huge difference to everyone's lives. Um, they're very aware of the obstacles that seniors face and try every day to help combat them. Um, Sarah, even with, with COVID, the center today is active. It's active every day. Sarah sends and Marilyn send out emails at least twice a week what's going on in, in their community. And their leadership is absolutely the best. The city is very lucky to have them. And they, they have just taken, over the last five years, have taken really good care of the seniors. And we're ready to come back when you're ready to open the building. Let me tell you how ready we are. So thank you all very much for how much you give to the senior center and how much you value the seniors in our community. It's appreciated.
Others.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Susan, for a excellent presentation. Um, I just want to comment on, I've known you now for quite a while. The energy that you bring, that your committee brings to this city is what makes this city the city. Um, and I relate to your comment. I'm a senior citizen that's in total denial. And uh, at some point in time, I'll probably start heading, heading over there as well. But what you do uh, is amazing for our community. What Sarah Shepherd does is, uh, and again, and I, this has just been a broken record about the amazing staff that we have here in Tewalton and the amazing work that our staff, and I'm going to, I'm going to say more under uh, council comments. But our, our staff is truly amazing and it's individuals like you, Sarah, with what you bring to the table. And then it's because of the volunteers, um, Susan, and, and what you, the energy you bring um, is what makes the Oneida Poll Center. And quite frankly, I, I would throw in Meals on Wheels. The energy you bring to that and the amazing job that you do in keeping that alive and active. Um, and I really thank you for everything that you've, you've brought to our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just got two comments. Uh, one, was that you in the iFly, Susan?
I'm sorry?
Was that you in the iFly, uh, any of the uh?
No.
That was Thea Wood. She is an advisory community member.
Wow, Thea did it. All right, good for her. All right.
I like my boots on the ground.
All right. Uh, like Paul said, I just, yeah, I want to thank staff. Um, I know Sarah and Marilyn are super active in supporting the committee. Uh, all the times I've visited pre-COVID, I hear wonderful things about both of you, Sarah and Marilyn. Uh, these are tough uh, customers, if you will. The uh, folks at the poll center, uh, they're, their uh, standards are high. Um, and you guys meet and exceed their standards. I've never heard a bad thing mentioned by either of you and everything you're doing. So I just want to thank you for your and Marilyn's efforts at the poll center. Um, like Susan's saying, I look forward to it being open again. Uh, one, because it's a terrific community gathering place and two, uh, for the Meals on Wheels. So folks, uh, you know, the social isolation, like you mentioned right now, is, is terrible for folks who uh, have to stay at home, especially with COVID and people with health issues. Um, so reaching out and uh, keeping in contact with those folks are super important. So between the poll center and Meals on Wheels, I very much appreciate that we're trying to have at least one contact with each one of our seniors in the city uh, a week. And then, uh, as Paul's mentioning, uh, as more and more of us are aging, um, I have the Aging Task Force people, especially Joe Lipscomb always in my ear saying, you know, the Tewalton population is getting older and older. So the poll center is going to get more and more popular. So um, more and more programs will have to be developed over time because we're going to have a, what, a higher percentage of seniors in this town in a couple, three years than we've ever had. And so we want to keep them supported and keep those folks in town, both the recreation programs and as we've mentioned during work session with housing. So they don't have to leave here and with their family and friends. So thanks again, both Sarah and Susan for your report.
Thank you. Very much.
All right. So next special report, I assume is from Don, since it's a quarterly financial report.
Uh, yes, it would be me, Mayor.
Susan wants to give us our, you know, give a quarterly financial report.
Hey. You know, that would be all right, too.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And actually, listening to Susan's presentation uh, made me realize that when we took over the, the poll center a number of years ago, I realized that I was pretty far away from needing or being eligible to attend the, or the, the programs there. And just realized that uh, I'm just over six months away from uh, being able to participate. So you may see me over there more as I need the exercise. So anyway, I'm not here to talk about that this evening. I'm here to talk about the, the first quarter financial report of fiscal year 2021. And I'm going to share my screen. And then maybe I won't be staring up at a different screen. It'll be a lot easier to look at. There we go. Also, it is the first quarter of fiscal year 2021. What we're going to talk about this evening is I'm going to go over the budget to actual for the first quarter of this year in comparison to fiscal year 1920. I'll talk a little bit about our investment report in your packet. I asked Nicole this morning to attach to the council packet, the investment report analysis from the, from our investment advisor for that first quarter. So you should have that. Uh, we're going to talk about the tax year 2021 property tax uh, rolls. We got those numbers in last week. So I'll talk about where our assessed value is looking at and kind of what I'm looking at for this coming year. Uh, we did just get our PERS contribution rates also from the PERS board uh, for 20, the biennium 21 to 23. So I'll talk about what those look like. And then I'll give some real quick updates on some of the CARES Act programs that we are participating in. So to start off, let's talk about the uh, budget to actuals. Uh, the, the point that I want to make with the general fund revenues is you'll see that we are actually bringing in higher percentage and higher dollars in the first quarter of this fiscal year than we did last year. We know that there are some revenues that are impacted by COVID. Obviously, our transient lodging taxes are down significantly. We have some others, but then some of our other revenues we are receiving. Um, our muni court fines are actually uh, above budget for the first quarter this year. Our marijuana taxes are above our estimates for the first quarter and our land use application fees are also trending uh, significantly over what we budgeted. So we're would have actually expected this number to be a little uh, less, maybe on a percentage basis or even the dollars. Uh, we are actually holding pretty steady so far through the first quarter. On the expenditure side, uh, I think the big thing here is if you look at the actual dollars, we are about spending about the same amount as we did last fiscal year. Our percentage is up a little bit because the budget is lower by about $3 million. And a lot of that was the PERS economic, the PERS uh, employer incentive fund payment we made as well as the contribution to the Tewalton City Services Center building. On the building revenue side, uh, we are down as far as the dollars and the percentage. I know in talking before Aquila had left, she was talking about that the building department is still pretty busy. And we are still bringing in revenues. I think what we're seeing, the difference here a little bit is the size of the projects. Uh, first quarter last year, we had some larger projects coming in and taking out permits. Uh, so we're still very, we're still busy there. They're just on smaller projects. So the dollars aren't as high. Uh, the road operating fund, you'll see there's a fairly significant drop in revenue this year and the majority of that is gas tax. Obviously, people through COVID have not been out on the road as much, so they're not buying as much gas. And so gas tax revenues are down. We're also seeing a slow amount of collections on the vehicle license fees for the two counties. Um, I think part of that is the delay and when uh, COVID was happening, the beginning of that, the DMV was closed down. People weren't having to pay their renewal fees. And so we weren't getting those in. That is starting to pick back up. So we'll see how that trends going forward. Acquaria Parking, we, we just recently sent out the invoices for that. So you won't see the revenue until this next quarter start to come in. The thing I want to point out here is this is, the drop here is really interest revenue. And when I talk a little bit about our investment report, I'll show that we are down significantly as far as the rate of return that we were a year ago. And so that's why that number is significantly lower. On the water operating fund and the revenue side, we are up on that. Uh, we are seeing consumption going back up. And that, especially on the residential side, would make a lot of sense and that more people are home, they're using more water. I did see a report from Nick Westendorf the other day about our consumptions and how the consumptions are going up. And that's, so that's showing on the revenue side. The, the large percentage of this is in our usage revenue. We are at 49% of budget uh, through the first quarter. We had dropped the budget down somewhat significantly due to, when we first put it together because our consumptions last year were down. And so we're starting to wrap that back up. So we are a higher percentage of budget today. On the expenditure side, the big piece of this is kind of lag from Portland and the timing it takes to the billing. So even though our consumption is up now, we're starting to, we won't be billed for those consumptions for the, into the next quarter or beyond. So what we're seeing is that shift where we are less consumption through the end of the year. That's what we've been billed from Portland and now we'll start to see that shift again. But the reason we're down percentage-wise there is on our billings from Portland for the water we buy. Uh, so this is the, the report, copy of the report that we put into your packet. Uh, take some time if you'd like to look over it. If you have any questions either tonight or reach out to me after this, you will see that our overall yield for our portfolio is 1.255%. We have nearly uh, $80 million invested. The majority of it is in our state uh, or the local government investment pool because that is our most liquid amounts of funds. And when I show you the, the interest portfolio in a minute, we'll talk about kind of how we've been investing most recently related to that. Uh, and then we are investing out, we are in compliance as the compliance overview shows, we are in compliance with our policy. So this graph is similar to one I showed you last time. It shows the benefits of our uh, diversifying our portfolio and going with an investment advisor. The state pool has been down at 1% uh, this, this whole quarter. Unfortunately, I just got word last week that the state pool is going down to 0.75% uh, for our funds invested there. The, you'll see our other, our core investments, our general fund money, our general non-bond proceeds. So it's all our funds. It's our uh, water funds, sewer funds, our general fund. Uh, the bond proceeds are the other graph there. You are seeing that we are, obviously, when we sell off an investment that was earning 2%, 3% and we have to buy it at You are seeing that we are obviously when we sell off an investment that was earning 2%, 3% and we have to buy it at point 2% or 0.5%. That changes that overall percentage. We are still trending a little high. At 1.869% on the core funds, based upon the fact that we had some longer term investments that were higher interest rates that that we are earning on those until they mature. What we are doing right now, I've had a couple maturities come up come to recently that in order to reinvest them, we would be buying investments at about a point 2.25% interest rate. So we've dumped some of that money into the pool for the short term to get that one to and now 0.75% as we get our property tax collections, we'll have to buy some investments again. So I'm just kind of hoping to see, hoping that maybe they'll creep up a small amount before we have to turn around and invest dollars again. So property taxes, as this graph shows, we have consistently been over 4%. In fact, even prior to this, but on this graph since 1516, in a high over 6% in our assessed value growth in tax year 1819. I did just receive the certificate certified roles from both counties. Last week, we are at a 4.55% of assessed value growth. We budgeted at 4%. So we are experiencing higher revenue potential in our growth than what we budgeted. The risk that we are still seeing or we will be seeing that we're going to keep our eye on is the collection rate and people's inability to pay. One positive to our collections on the collection rate is that most or a large percentage of residential homes are paid. Their property taxes are paid as part of their mortgage payments in an escrow account. So those monies have been collected. So the banks will turn those over. So we might not see a huge drop in collection rate in this tax year. We're kind of waiting to see what that might look like. The other thing that I do budget fairly conservatively on the collection rate. Typically, Washington County is at about a 95 to 96% collection rate. I budgeted a 94% collection rate. So I do have a little bit of a wiggle room if collections do come in a little low than past years. We'll keep an eye on that. And if we have to adjust anything accordingly, we will look at that after the first of the year, we start getting our big parts portions of the collections on property taxes the end of November and early December. So in the next couple of months, I'll have a better feel for what those numbers are looking like. Purse rates. So there's some good news in the purse rates this year. I typically tell you that we're going to we brace for a 3% to 4% increase in our purse contribution rate. As this graph shows, we were spike or we were trending upward over the last cup few bienniums. That drop you see was that employer incentive fund that we took advantage of. And so as of November of 2019, we saw significant savings in our purse contribution rates, and that's the drop there. But what you'll see here is that the tier one, tier two rates are staying flat. It's actually only going up 0.1% for a contribution rate. So that'll be a significant savings over what we were initially anticipating. And then those other two, the two ops are to the general and the police officer contribution rates are only going up about 2%. So we aren't seeing the growth in this rate as we had anticipated. Some of the changes that they had made and at purse is helping this picture. We also had the in the years that feed into this. We were seeing investment earnings in the purse funds at significantly higher rates. Where we're going to have to kind of keep our eye on is the 2325 biennium, because obviously the investment rates are significantly lower right now, and then we'll see some other impacts. So I think then we'll be looking at potentially back up to that 4% range, but it's still a little too early to tell what that will be looking like. But the good news is for at least the next biennium, we are seeing some very flat rate on tier one, tier two and flatter rate that we'd anticipated in the officer funds. Lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about our CARES Act funding. There's a couple of these. This is the graph I showed from the county. Last last quarterly report, what I'd like to talk about here is we have about four different ones that we are participating in in one way or another. The cities and special districts assistance, we were granted $617,000 up you up to 617,000 for reimbursement of our cares or COVID related expenditures. We have filed two claims on that total about 440,000 we've received for reimbursement of expense expenditures related to COVID response. The small business support, Jonathan Taylor has given you updates on this a couple of different times, and we are continuing to do some more outreach on the programs that he talked with you, I believe it was last meeting. So we're ramping up some of our our outreach and our marketing on that. Another program that we are just rolling out is related to the quarry or parking district. We know that our core area businesses have been impacted by COVID and their the businesses in those areas have been impacted by not being able to have customers in. So we've set up a program to enable to help those businesses that are COVID related on their parking fee or their parking tax. We think there we we set aside right now about $20,000 will the program is set up now to be no more than 50% of their bill, figuring it's for the first six months of this fiscal year. And then depending on their impacts related to the the governor's executive orders and so forth, will factor that in as well. And award. So Jonathan is reaching out to the businesses. He was doing some hand delivery stuff, I believe, starting today on that. So we have another program that we've rolled out to hopefully help our our businesses in the core area. The utility assistance program. I I sent you all an update on that from my last conversation with Community Action. We have another meeting this Friday to get another update. They are continuing to market the program. We're continuing to market it with our late. We we set out the delinquent notices. Obviously, we're not charging late fees and we're not shutting people off. But we are sending notices still. So people are aware of what the balances are. We don't want anybody to be caught with a huge bill later, not know not being aware of it. And we are putting flyers and information about this program in with those notices. Community action, when we met last time, they really felt that they were going to have more people applying than they had been. They are still they are starting to market it as well, a little bit more intense. They do a monthly mailing to 1,800 seniors and disabled people that are on their normal mailing list and they they offer other assistance programs to and they were going to put this information in with that mailing. That was supposed to go out, I believe, last week. If there they have other assistance programs and anybody that qualifies for any of those assistance programs, the Community Action is including information about the utility assistance. So they're trying to get it out to people that they serve in in all their other programs as well. As I mentioned in my email, we to date, we know of two of our residents that have got have been awarded assistance under this program. I anticipate this week we'll have more, but there are two that have received funding. One on the Washington County side and one on the Clackamas County side of our city. The last one I will talk about, and this is really not anything that's our program, but I the the county set aside $6 million for stable housing assistance or rental assistance. And I've provided you a little bit of information that Community Action had shared with us at the the last call. Where, you know, the interesting part is of the $6 million as of two weeks ago or a week and a half ago, that already spent five of that $6 million. We had waiting to see as the county analyzes what monies have been spent to date here in the next month or so. Whether they put more money towards that program or not. 56 households and 201 individuals in Twalton were assisted in this program as of a week and a half ago and $258,000 of assistance has been spent here in for our residents. The interesting thing I also saw in their graph that 51% of all the of that $5 million that they have sent out, 51% of the people they have assisted were due to job loss due to COVID. So it's a pretty significant impact. But the good news is there there is some assistance that is being sent out in our area and around the county. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I'll stop sharing my screen. So you can see everybody.
All right. See Bridget has her hand up.
Thank you, Don, for your very complete report. I had a really simple question, I think. About the utility bill program. And my question was, I think a lot of times when someone's on disability and other programs like that, they have stable more stable income, even though it's lower income. And so I'm curious if the utility bill program information is if people that are unemployment on unemployment are eligible? And also if we're communicating with people that are experiencing job loss. That's that's my concern right now.
So we reach out to everybody that is has a delinquent bill. Giving them the information. They will then contact Community Action and then have to show that their delinquency is related to COVID, which is what the program is. And it's 80% of the median income in the last month. So my theory on my theory on that, and I believe this is how Community Action is going, is if you've been out of your job for 30 days or more, obviously, you're a lower income level than than that median would be. So I think more people would qualify, the job loss people will qualify now than when they might not have under normal circumstances. But we are sending it out to everybody that has a delinquency with the parameters of the program and pointing them towards Community Action to get to find out whether they qualify for sure or not.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks. Yeah, I was just curious because I wasn't sure if being on unemployment made them not be low enough on their percentages if they could qualify. And it's a big adjustment. And I mean, I know so many people are unprepared. So I appreciate all the work you're doing on it. Thank you.
Other Valerie.
My my question is related to the utility assistance too. What if you have people that don't get the assistance, but at the end of this, you're, you know, they're they're going to have this big past due bill. Are you going to work out a payment plan or, you know, so they don't owe $1,000 all at once, for instance?
Yes. And so we have in in our notifications as well, even before this program was up and running. We were telling people, here's a number of ways to pay, but also contact us if you need to set up a payment plan. And so we will, we will continue that going forward. And, you know, we're going to look at. You know, we don't want to spread it out over five years. We're going to try to make something that's workable for us and the resident, and we'll work with people to get their bills paid.
That's great. Thanks.
Other questions for Don? Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Don. A couple of couple of questions. The Stable Housing Assistance Fund, that's a Washington County initiative, correct? So do we know what Clackamas County is doing? And if our Clackamas County residents can are getting any assistance if if they need it?
Unfortunately, I don't know. We I was sharing that information because we'd asked Community Action for it. So it Community Action is running that program for the county. It hasn't got anything through us individually. So I don't have a lot of the details on that program, unfortunately. So unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that. I could try to find out for you.
I I'd be curious because I at a C4 meeting, I I remember somebody mentioning it, but not getting an answer. And so I'm just curious what and then if if we're not, if if Clackamas County residents are not, what kind of, you know, what kind of my mind just went blank on the word I'm looking for to to find them to to steer them in the right direction, because there there really isn't a community action in Clackamas County. It's it's really Washington. It's Washington County based. And so if we can find a resource for them to to seek out help.
And I'll have to ask Community Action, because when we push for our Clackamas County residents to be eligible for the utility assistance, they were opening up things a little bit more. I don't know if this program was wrapped into that, but other programs they're doing that under this CARES Act from Washington County, they were not eliminating our Clackamas County residents.
And then on our going back to the utility bill, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing on that. I know that's just a huge undertaking. Do we know what and are we integrated at all with PGE and Northwest Natural on their bills? So that we're, you know, like, so that PG isn't turning off the electricity while we're giving them a break on their water bill.
Yeah, Community Action has assistance programs, energy assistance programs. And so those those are being handled already and have been even be pre COVID. And so that's another one. If someone knows about their programs for the energy assistance and didn't getting it, then they're also saying, hey, do you know about this utility bill assistance as well. So those are already going through Community Action and we're benefiting potentially or the our residents are benefiting under this program as well.
Great. Thank you very much, Don.
In addition to Republic Services, we've turned on Republic Services to hopefully signing a contract with Washington County and Community Action for this exact same thing.
Other questions for Don? I think that's it, Don. Thanks for your efforts and you know, we'll see what happens here in the in the coming months. Like you mentioned, I have concerns over investment returns and folks being able to pay their property taxes. I think you might have some a little bit of shortages in Washington County because of folks maybe not be able to make their last few mortgage payments, but hopefully it won't have a gigantic impact, but we're definitely going to see something for next year.
Yeah, I mean, I'll continue to monitor it, all of them and it compared to our budget. And after the this next quarter, I'll have a better feel for our revenues and our expenditures through that through the first half of the year and be able to make any adjustments accordingly.
Great. I appreciate your ability to change on a dime and be nimble because that's the name of the game for the next few months here, probably maybe more a few months, maybe for next year or so. All right. Well, thanks again, Don. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
All right. So next up, we get into general business and item number one is Twalton moving forward 2021 Neighborhood Safety Products, Projects and upcoming projects update. And I saw Jeff was there. Jeff, good evening, Jeff.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So I'm here tonight to just walk through our next round of neighborhood traffic safety projects. I'm going to share my screen. Make sure I get this right. All right. Can you all see that? Great. And I'm going to make everybody bigger so I can see you as well. All right. That's more like normal. So, yeah, so I'm here tonight to talk through the 2021 Neighborhood Traffic Safety Projects. It was a super exciting process this year going through the the public outreach process. So much like last year, we looked at essentially three main criteria. Oh, I actually jumped ahead of it. So much like last year, the program is bond funded. It's it's meant to address those safety projects in neighborhoods. Every year that we get as complaints from residents and project suggestions. We're looking to make sure the projects can be implemented quickly. But that they're spread out over life of the program. So when we started the program, we set aside about $2.5 million just under. And we did not identify all of the projects in the first year. We essentially said, you know, by year five, transportation is going to be quite a bit different than it was in year one. So so we are now on really year two of the project of the program. And then we're looking to address areas throughout the whole city. So the button on the lower left side of the screen there is the suggested project button. So we stuck with the same format we had last year where folks can go and push a button on the website and fill out a form to suggest a project. All right, here are the criteria. So we again use three main criteria to go through and sort the project. So geographic diversity. So what we really wanted to do is make sure we're spending money equitably around the city so that we're not overloading one neighborhood with most of the funding and ignoring others. We wanted to make sure that the projects that that were submitted and selected were really solution oriented. Is there a safety problem and can we find a good solution to fix the safety problem? And then we are generally shooting for And then we're generally shooting for projects in a $100,000 range, up to $100,000. Just again, to keep the, this project really focused on the smaller, more manageable projects. So this was cool. This is probably my favorite slide. So we had, we sent out 10,947 postcards. And then we got overwhelmed with project suggestions. It was pretty great. So we had eight social media promotions and each time that Megan posted something on Facebook or Nextdoor, we just got a, just a brush of project suggestions. So it ended up being pretty fun to, you know, we could always tell Megan and send something out because we would get a whole bunch of project suggestions the next day. So we had 230 people submit suggestions, suggested projects in Twalton, which is just a huge number, way, way, way more than last year. Of those 230 projects, there are really 55 discreet locations identified. So we were able to kind of cluster the projects into 55 discreet locations. And then out of that, we selected six projects. Fairly challenging process to do that. So of the 230, 99 of the project suggestions were really outside the scope of this program. So they were too big and really better suited to the transportation system plan update and kind of looking for that next big project funding source. Or they were being addressed by other projects. So that was kind of fun to get project suggestions and to be able to reach back out and say, hey, you know, we're doing that already. In some cases, the projects were better suited to just operational work, road striping, a new sign here, there, sometimes streetlights. And so that worked out pretty well. And then a few were outside Twalton's jurisdiction. So some requests for projects on 124th or out on cycle or just several down in the Willistonville area. Day Road was one that we, we asked, asked us to fix Day Roads way outside of Twalton. So, but at the end of the day, we had 55 projects, discreet project locations that we could look at. And if you look at the map here, so these are not the CIOs. So what we did is we tried to figure out, how do we, how do we really decide geographic diversity? So we kind of broke the city down into zones of, kind of where, how people move around and get places in the city. And so we looked at each one of these zones as we were going through our geographic diversity to try and figure out, okay, do we have projects kind of spread around the whole city? And so you can, you can see each one of these, either red lines or dots is one of the 55 projects. And you can see that we had requests from kind of all over the city. So this is a map that all the design and planning put together. It's pretty cool. So what it says is that, this is when we were trying to look at, how much money have we spent around the city? And so the bigger the dot, the more money we spent in that area. And so you can see as we get over kind of on this side, we hadn't spent very much. This big red dot there is Garden Corner Curves, so we spent a lot there. I believe that this is Martin Aziz Sagert, this big number seven, so we're going to spend a lot there. So, so this map really kind of helped us look at the projects and say, okay, are we doing this equitably? I apologize for the fuzziness of this map. We grabbed this at the last minute from the website and didn't actually get the original. So what's cool about this map is it's really hard to read. It's, it's really messy. As we get more and more into this program, you start to see more and more projects. So these blue stars here are the projects we're looking at this year. And so you can see, they are essentially spread around through the city and areas that we haven't really spent much money yet. And there are six blue stars. So I'm going to walk through, this is a list of projects, and I'm going to walk through each project description and just give a brief description and a, a better map so you can kind of see where the projects are, projects are in a more explicit manner. So, but 50th and Wilkie, Nyberg Lane, we talked about that one last year. And then kind of got our scope wrong, so we had to back out of that one. So we're bringing it back again this year. We had a lot of requests again this year for that project. Sagert Street and 72nd, Boon's Ferry near the library, or Twalton Commons, Hazelbrook Road by Jergens Park, and then Boon's Ferry near Arapahoe. And so you can see the price, the costs over here, we're shooting for about a half a million dollars a year when we, when we do these over five years. So these are not in any particular order, but I will run through these, through these maps. So 50th and Wilkie, so Borland Road, you can see Borland Road right down here. Wilkie's just north of that. There's this pretty tight 90-degree turn there. And there's a lot of runoff the road accidents here. So we get a lot of requests to try and slow folks down coming around this corner and do, do something to keep people from running off the road and driving through fences and backyards. And so, whoops, sorry about that. So that project will essentially put in some speed humps, driver feedback sign. There's an existing legal crosswalk here, but you can imagine, and there's a trail that comes out of this little court here. And so you can imagine that's not the, the safest unmarked crosswalk. And so the project will either put a, put a marked crosswalk there, likely raised to try and slow traffic down as well, or do a mid-block crossing somewhere in here and also be raised to try and slow traffic down. So Nyberg Lane, so this is one we talked about last year. Last year, we thought we were going to do something up here by the park entrance. We realized that wasn't really what people were asking for. This year, we got some really great project suggestions to really address this 57th and Nyberg intersection. So it's, it's apparently hard to see when you're driving. So a lot of people are on the stop signs here. A little bit scary for pedestrians, and I think as well as for drivers. So this project will essentially update this intersection to try and make it more obvious, more visible. Strike the crosswalks so that they're really obvious and visible. We may put in one of the flashing stop signs to really get people's attention and hope that they stop for real. And then we also had some speed concerns kind of all along Nyberg Lane. And so at this point, we're either looking at a driver feedback sign or speed humps. And so we've got a bit of public outreach to do to go back and close the loop on this one and make sure we understand what folks really want out there. All right, Sagert and 72nd. So this one's super fun because I worked on this a long time ago when I first got to Twalton. We put this crosswalk in. I don't even know what year that was. It was a few years ago. And we did this curb ramp, and then we came back and finished this curb ramp as part of the Sagert Street Sidebar Project where we did the art. And finally, oh, we also put in, it is, whenever we did this crosswalk, we put in a street light to just light things up a little bit. And now finally, we had a bunch of requests for just finishing this up with rapid flashing beacons. And so this crosswalk at 72nd will finally be complete. So that was pretty fun to see it come in as another suggestion. Oops, sorry about that. My mouse pad is really sensitive, so I have to keep my hands away from it. All right. So Boon's Ferry, Twalton Commons. So this is another one. It's been a long time project. So a few years ago, we went out here and we added signs and stop bars. You can kind of see them there in the photo at each one of those three crosswalks. And that helped a lot compared to what was there before, which was just crosswalks. And so this is another one where we got a bunch more requests. And it's another opportunity to come in and just finish one of these, one of these crosswalks. And so this project at this point will put in rapid flashing beacons at one of these crosswalks. We are thinking it's this crosswalk, there's a signal at Martin Aziz Library is over here. This is kind of that next, next place you cross. And so that one makes sense. This one over here by the Oregon Nurse Association is way too close to this intersection to be safe. So we looked at both of these and decided that that one's probably the most likely for folks to want to cross before they get down here and cross. So that, that'll actually be a nice, another nice project to just finish up something that we started quite a few years ago. Hazelbrook Road up at Jergens Park. So people all live on this side. The park is on this side. They have to get across the street somehow. So I think they sprint right now. And so I think this project request is really to put a safe crosswalk and crossing to get from this side of the, of Hazelbrook, across the street to Jergens Park. And so that'll be crosswalk curb ramps and rapid flashing beacons and then some signing to make sure everybody is aware. And then this one, Boon's Ferry at Arapahoe. So here's Killarney Lane up here, Lake Street down here. There is an existing trail crossing right here that is essentially the way to get across Boon's Ferry and get to Ibec Park. And so this crossing will get rapid flashing beacons and additional signing to really make it visible. And so this is another one where we've got quite a few comments and project suggestions for. And it seemed to make a ton of sense as a connection from the east side of Boon's Ferry across the west side over to Ibec Park. So that, I'm going to back up for a second. So that, those are the six neighborhood traffic safety projects. And then when we were here a couple of meetings ago, giving a program update, a quarterly update for the, the bus ride, when everybody was jammed into the, the giant bus, you all asked us to come back and talk about what's next in addition to these projects. So, so here is our, we are kind of our next big projects that we're getting started on. So we still have a bunch of projects in the works that are moving through design and starting construction, like Martin Aziz Sagert. That one is, should be, we should be advertising that sometime in February, March. So that one will be constructed next summer. And then these projects, we hadn't really talked, sorry about that again, hadn't really talked much about to this point. So Myceloni Street, $2.5 million to essentially, you know, we built the bridge there a few years ago. And in order to really make that, that alternative route function well, we would come in and finish up Myceloni Street from the bridge over 124th. So that's, there's interesting lane edges there, no sidewalk, no real bike lanes. So just cleaning that whole area up and putting in sidewalks and bike lanes and making that a much more user-friendly route for people that want to essentially get around the traffic at 124th and TS Road. The next project on the list is 118th and Herman. And that's, and I'll walk through these individually too, but that's a similar project with a similar purpose. So as we get into that map, we can walk through that. Teton and Twalton, that's a signal. And then Boon's Ferry corridor sidebar project. There's going to be a lot of public outreach in that one, so we will walk through that one as well. And then this, this slide shows we're really starting design this winter. And then you can see when construction is anticipated. So, so this is really kind of that next big push for the bond program. So Myceloni Street, I talked about this already. You can see a, a nice close up. Here's the Luagan Bridge. We did sidewalks up to about there. And then there's sort of this interesting kind of jagged right-of-way line that runs along here. And so we'll be looking at this to see how we can address existing parking. A lot of folks park in the gravel shoulder downs. How do we, how do we accommodate those people? This portion was completed by development. And so we'll be looking at this intersection and all the way up to the bridge and try and figure out how to, how to best make this a good road for people to use. So 112 is really the shortcut to industry restaurant or to Twalton Shover Road. And then up here is Stickman Brewing, and this is 118. And so I will jump over to this next one. There's a close up. So this project, there's essentially one lane and it's a left, right, or through lane. And so what we'd originally anticipated or thought about was, can we do some widening here to provide a right lane, right turn lane, and try and make this easier? That's the project. We're kind of taking another look at that with our traffic engineers to see if this is the right place to, to do this work or if we would be better off focusing on Myceloni Street and 112th. They both essentially get to the same place. And so, so we're going to take a look at that as part of these two projects together and see really what makes the most sense there. And part of our hesitation here, as you can see, the railroad tracks, railroad tracks always make for tricky design and engineering. And so we really want to look at that cost benefit to see if, if that makes sense. And then this one, this project was in the TSP way back 2014 and really even 2011 in that original draft. And so this is a signalized intersection at Twalton Road and Teton. And so some of the comments we received as we started looking at this is, are we going to cause traffic to run at Jergens Avenue instead? Trying to avoid the signal. So part of this project is going to look at that and, and take a look and make sure that we're not, not making things worse. And, and if we think we are, then there are going to be some traffic calming measures that we can do on Jergens to try and keep that cut through traffic to a minimum. All right. And then finally, Boon's Ferry Road corridor sidewalk and bike lane project. I think we have a better name for it now. This is really long name. I think we'll shorten it up to Boon's Ferry Road corridor, but it's essentially completing the bike lanes and sidewalks all the way along Boon's Ferry from, really from Mohawk all the way down to the southern city limits. So at Norwood. And all right. And so that one is going to have a lot of public outreach, largely because we want to know how people are using a corridor and how they want to use a corridor. So, so look for that fairly soon. There's going to be a survey link in there. I think there's a link on here. So I think that might mean the survey is up. And so essentially, we're just going to be out really trying to get feedback and figure out what makes the most sense to try and fill in those gaps. All right. Now I can actually go to the last slide. So I guess tonight, questions, comments, suggestions? Let me know if you want me to stop sharing my screen or if you want to go back and look at any of the other maps or projects.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions, comments for Jeff? Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. A very nice presentation. So, oh, first off, let me get my note to real quick. Thank you. I'm glad they're finally putting a crosswalk over Jergens Park. It's very similar, if I understand it correctly, what you did at Ibec Park, and it is really needed over there. So that, that's just an outstanding find. I have a request, and it's something that fell through the cracks. On, on Graham's Ferry Road, years back before Counselor Kellogg was on council, was counselor, he was president of the Ibec CIO and was instrumental in getting a sidewalk on the, what would be, I guess, the westbound side and a retaining barrier to allow a continuous walk-through on that side of the street. And on the other side of the street, on what would be the southbound side or the eastbound side, through that curve, the sidewalk ends right where that new housing development went in four or five years ago. And then there's a section where there's no sidewalk, a quite dangerous section. It was never included on anyone's list because the developer, and you, you, you got the backend of the huge confrontation over extending Miami into, out to Graham's Ferry Road. And the developer was coming in there, was going to build, I believe, 12 homes. And that developer, part of their, their thing was to finish the safe school, safe routes to school there by completing that sidewalk. That deal is not only now officially dead, but will never happen because apparently there's some serious soil issues there and it makes it impossible to build. So because of that, we now have, it's literally the last section of safe route to school for that old area. And it's kind of dangerous. We put in the sidewalk, we put in the crosswalk at Dogwood, which you keep forgetting to mention, Jeff. And that is, I think, also Counselor Kellogg, and I will throw myself into that conversation, a little cherry in to get that done. And that's now completed and actually working, and it's very nice. But I'd, I'd really like to see you add that to your list of considerations, similar to what you did across the street from Twalton High School, where you finally finished the sidewalk there. Because it's a very dangerous stretch and it is, it is literally the last stretch of that road. And it would finish Graham's Ferry Road. And I think put to rest, any, anybody's, they look at that and their immediate thought is, well, are they going to widen this road and mess up this traffic? And it's like, no, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to touch that road. We're not going to improve the traffic. We don't want to encourage any traffic, but we want to And we don't want to encourage any traffic, but we want to. Put a sidewalk in there to, to allow the, and it's used quite a bit, and you currently, you have to cry. It's kind of dangerous to cross. Over to the other side of the street to hit that crosswalk, and you're right there at that curve, the road kind of dips a little bit. Visibility is really, really bad, and a bike lane slash sidewalk over there would really, really help.
Yes, we can add that. I'll, I'll enter that into our database for next year. So it's in our list of projects to look at.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments? Bridget?
Hi, Jeff. Thank you so much for that giant messy map of work that you're getting done. And it's pretty exciting, and it's nice to see. That I just love how the outreach was really successful, and I love how we're explaining what we're doing to citizens. And I think it's a really good foundation for. Great management of bond resources. So thank you again for your leadership on it. I had just a couple little questions. One, one, sorry. I don't know what's going on with my voice tonight. One was. That with the Boon's Ferry bike lane. Do you, is it gonna be able to get bicyclists down to Community Park ever eventually?
So there's a separate project, so the Twalton Sherwood Road project that is going on right now. That actually includes. Some bike striking and signing. It would essentially go north on Boon's Ferry. And then you would be able to get to Community Park. And so that project. It's a complicated reason for why we added the bike lanes there, but we were either gonna have to have them on Twalton Sherwood Road where there's not enough room. And it's really scary, and so an option there is to basically head up on Boon's Ferry and then go down Boon's Ferry to the trail. And get underneath I five on the trail, and so that's really what, so that's that project. So this project and that project will essentially be tied together.
Yeah, okay, great. I like the Boon's Ferry bike path just because it's off the road. And, but you can only go so far off the road, and then you're back on the road, which makes me a little nervous. And then my other question was with, or comment. Was with the Teton Twalton. Light currently, when it's not COVID times, when it's so backed up there. I know if you're coming north on. Teton that you. Take a right, because you can't take a left because it's so backed up, and jog through Jergens. So I think Jergens is a cut-through sometimes already, depending on which way you're going, and I just wanted to. Say that because it's just impossible to take a left-hand turn there. And then, I don't know if I've asked this before, but it crosses my mind often. If. There's ever a consideration to put a right-hand turn lane. On Teton and Twalton Sherwood Road. Because. With truck traffic and community traffic and. Twalton Sherwood as it is, it'd be nice to be able to allow people to turn right. That are not going straight or left over that intersection.
And that is a project that's in our TSP to make that right turn lane. It gets a little complicated, and I think there may be some other things that we can do there hopefully. To help make that less complicated with UPS there. And their trucks making that, making that right turn, and there, there doesn't have to be a ton of truck traffic, and so. Hopefully at some point we can get to that, but it probably deserves another look in at TSP too, now that. It's six years old and we can go back and revisit it.
Thank you very much again.
Sure, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Jeff?
I lost my screen, but I can talk, I guess. Um, I just want, these are, I've walked everywhere in Twalton, and these are all great crossings. The one I want to really thank you for is Boon's Ferry in Arapaho, because I probably cross that twice a week, and you've got about a fifty-fifty shot of a car stopping right now. And it's close enough to the high school that I think there's kids on there too. The one I wonder, always wonder about that I think so dangerous is that if we have a lot of bikes that go through Twalton Park. And when you're coming out heading south, there's just no way to cross there. Has that been pointed out, and are there any possible solutions for that?
That is on my bike route. It's really scary.
Yeah.
So it's, that's a challenging one to fix because there are tracks right there, so there is a current project that we're working on. That essentially goes up to the railroad tracks on the other side, really for pedestrians. And so that's called the Sweep to Community Park project, and so we're in the midst of doing public outreach and design for that right now. Fixing the, the exit of the other. Bike lane is not currently a project. It's something, someday we need to try and figure out how to. How to fix any of that whole corner.
You can award if you can figure it out, but. I just kind of wonder. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, thanks for your presentation. Great to see all of the progress. Two items of minutia. One, the Boon's Ferry and Arapaho crossing. I also like Counselor Pratt take that pretty often on dog walks with the kids. The one item that I would say wasn't addressed is the lighting on that crosswalk is terrible at night. The streetlights are positioned about twenty feet in each direction, north and south, but there's nothing there at the crosswalk. And so I noted here at Martin Azzi and whatever that is, Mohawk, I guess. A light was installed there at that mid-block crossing, and that's improved conditions dramatically. So if we can do the same thing at, at Arapaho, I think there'd be some big benefits. Thanks. Second item of minutia, I had a couple of constituents contact me about the mid-block crossing on Twalton Road near the vet clinics and the police station. And that, that one was also in need of an RFB if we could put it in there and maybe look at the lighting on that one too.
And that is the project that's currently underway, so there's a ton of public outreach in that, and that will get rapid flashing beacons. And then right now, we're just trying to figure out, do we widen the sidewalk on both sides in the street or, or? So there's another community survey going out imminently. We just had final comments on that internally today, so we should see that.
Great.
In just a few days.
Okay, and then the third item is unrelated to the bond program, but as long as I got you. I got an email today from ODOT about a community paths program. Where they've extended out the application deadline, which to me means they have more money and not enough applications. And it's to provide paths that traverse parks and other things, and we've talked about in the past, you know, connecting Iback Park. Up to the Garden Corner Curves, and this seems to me to be a perfect opportunity to put in an application for those funds. So I will, I will email the information to you and Ross, and then you guys can take it from there.
And I believe Ross and Rich are looking at that. That's about as much as I know.
Sure. All right. Thanks again for your presentation.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, that's it, Jeff. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. Looking forward to some of the improvements up here in northern Twalton.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next up, let's see, is. We're done with general business? No, sorry, one more item. Consideration of recommendations from Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. So you've had some. Volunteers to be appointed to citizen advisory committees. Who wants to chat about that? That's Bridget, Maria, and Nancy, I believe. It's Bridget, Maria, and.
Valerie.
Valerie, all right.
Yeah, Valerie wasn't able to come, but Maria and I met, we talked about it a little bit last session, but. All the appointments were applications for the library committee, and we reappointed. And were able to appoint new members to the library committee, including a student member. I didn't pull up my information. I wasn't sure if I was giving this. I don't know if you have it, Maria, that, for the people's names. But I, I do want to thank every person that applied and remind people, even if you weren't selected, that. There are a lot of volunteer opportunities at the library, and keep your eye open for other committee openings. That we wish we could pick everybody because there are such great applicants, all of, every single applicant was awesome.
I've got the names right here, Bridget.
Perfect.
Okay, it was Alan Feinstein was a reappointment. Oaks, Oxana, wow, Devlet, Tina, I'm so sorry, is a new appointment. And then Kai Gill is a student.
Yes, so those were two. And the new appointment, I have to say, Oxana is gonna be great. She's a native Russian language speaker. She's also been volunteering at the library, and she's a, she was a lawyer there, and she's getting her, she's trying to get her law. License here in the United States, and she's been giving and volunteering for free. I forget what it was, legal. But not, not legal advice, but support.
Isn't she a notary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, notary for through the library. So she's just been doing that for volunteer and for no charge. So she's gonna be a great addition to the team, I hope, and like I said, they were all. Amazing applicants with advanced degrees and all kinds of goodies, so we're just really fortunate. Every time I meet people from our city. It's always a pleasure, and, and our people are so impressive, so thanks.
All right. So I have a motion on the recommendation?
I move to approve the recommendations from the, for the library committee. Second.
To accept the recommendations from that Council Committee on Advisory Appointments and discussions on the motion. All right, Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg. Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
That's Morrison.
Yes.
That's Reyes.
Yes.
That's President Grimes.
Hi.
I vote aye also, so it's unanimous. We had no items removed from the consent agenda tonight, so that brings us to Council Communications. And I'll start new other pictures here, so starting with Bridget.
Oh, hi. I have a few this week, and this is the week, the second week. When the quarterly meetings and the monthly meetings kind of coincide, so. So bear with me. I did attend the. Willamette River Water Coalition Board Meeting. Now, this is the, the coalition where we just have a bundle of rights for emergency use only. And most of the updates for that is that they have been having major projects that they've been moving forward on. With pipes, and although it's been COVID time, they're still moving forward. According to schedule, there's been some conversation around measuring. Water that they were able to straighten out and have showed good leadership on. And then there's been some measurements of heat indexes that they're still working through and environmental groups are concerned about. So just that is in flux, and there's not an answer. There's a legal sort of delay on all that. And, and all we did was approve the. Meeting schedule for next year, and they're also moving leadership around. So the, there was a new leader that was appointed, and he is gonna be going mainly to their, they've split this group off. From another group to manage the water for the cities that are more getting this daily. Water from them, so Joel Corey will be doing, running the meetings from now on. Instead of the other general manager, Dave Kraska, and he's gonna move just over to the other meeting. So that's a change for you to be aware of. I attended the, as I know others here did too, the Oregon League of Cities Conference. I just want to put out a big shout-out to the Oregon League of Cities. They've been such a leader in advocating for. Listening to, at the city level to communities, especially around during this COVID nineteen crisis. And they've been, you know, meeting with us regularly on Fridays, and I know a lot of us have attended. I don't go every Friday. Sometimes I've got my calls, but, but they've been really informative and helpful, and the. The conference itself was impressive. Some of the things I attended were. Equity, there was a wonderful timeline of Black History in Oregon, which is pretty eye-opening. You can find that information at Black History in Oregon Timeline on YouTube, if you're interested in taking a look. There was also conversations around a new format for caucuses being developed there. And some other things as they do with the National League of Cities, and I'm sure others will have updates as well. But I found all the sessions that I attended to, whether it was creative solutions around homelessness, whether it was equity and inclusion. A really nice women's roundtable, information for city councilors put forth by Rio, which is a great. A great teaching process that I was allowed to see when I was down, over in DC before COVID. Or during the very beginning of that. Then also, I attended the community listening session. For the, which this session is available on our website, and it talks about the current use of force policies. By our police department, and the next one, I think comes up November eighteenth, and that one will be more community conversation. So I just invite the public to attend that. I also want to thank Ross. And our city for having a safe pumpkin wing event on the weekend of the eighteenth. Because those giant squash growers put, put a lot of time and energy into that. So for them to be able to do a drive-through event is, it's remarkable, and it's really wonderful that we're able to keep that in place. Even though I would have loved to have been at the pumpkin regatta. And then on the twentieth, I even attended the. Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. We talked about a new. Group of monies called, it's a CARES Act Community Psyche Grant. So this is a grant that we are collaborating with other cities in sections of Washington County. And there's money distributed to uplift the spirit of the community through arts. And the Art Committee will be working together in collaboration with our Parks Department and other communities. To come up with something for our community, so that's exciting. And we also went over Stone Ridge Park designs. You might want to go online and look at the Stone Ridge Park designs that are proposed. And you can vote on them, and it might end up being a little bit of both designs, depending on what the. Feedback from the community is. And we, the, the light wrap was also discussed, the utility wrap. And that's being tested right now, so that's just a process, especially because it's the first time we're doing it. And so it's taking a little bit of time, but I'm looking forward to when we're able to unveil it. It's really neat. And we also got an equity plan update and city updates about COVID nineteen that we were able to share. Then I attended a meeting, well, I just, I attended a Twelton City Water Update. And I think I'll go into further detail in the future on that one. But I just want to say that it's just a pleasure to work with Jeff Fox and his whole team. They're impressive every time. And the extra work that they do on behalf of our community and sit at the table and important conversations is really not lost on, on me here. And we're really fortunate. On the 22nd, I went to the Building Bridges. Well, some of you might have been watching the presidential debate. The Building Bridges is usually a workshop through VAN. This year was a, two panels. And that information is available at the Muslim Educational Trust website. If you want to look at it, it's well worth it. The conversation is communities of color talking about police structures. And then there was a beautiful poem by a young woman. And then there was a big panel of different law enforcement, chief, police chiefs, district attorney, Washington County Sheriff, our state attorney, all kinds of people talking about our police and justice system. And it was quite a conversation. And, and then as I had thought might happen, the LIP meeting, the planning meeting for the Metro BOM money was rescheduled. So we didn't meet last week, but we will meet this week. If public can view it, it's at 2:00 PM on Thursday. And they kind of went back to the drawing board and wanted to look at some definitions and some things that local nonprofit leaders were concerned about. But I have to say, they're very strongly advocates for our county and not just taking guidance, but really talking about what they think is going to work for our community through their experience. So I'm just really impressed by the group of people that are working diligently on that committee. They want to do a really good job. And I also want to remind people, we won't be meeting till after daylight savings time. So on the first of, of November is you turn your clocks fall back. And election day is the third. And I want to thank everybody that's been volunteering and everyone that voted and continues to vote and to remember to drop your ballots off by the 27th, if you're going to mail them. And that you can mail them in the ballot box all the way to the date of election, November 3rd. And finally, I want to say, I attended a, a literature festival. And there was an aging advocate I mentioned earlier. She utilized a word I'd never heard of before called geronticide. I'm not even pronouncing it right. But just her deep concern for how many people we are losing to COVID that are aging, older people, and also the major impact this is having on the workforce, especially for women. And I wanted to propose to the council and get feedback or what your thoughts were on possibly starting our meetings with a moment of silence for people that are suffering or have died as a result of COVID-19. I think that it's a very sad and tragic grief experience that we're going through. And with over, how many people have died so far? And especially all the wisdom that's lost through this generation of people. That I just, I just, I don't know. I was very moved by these speakers and I really thought maybe more gravitas. I know we try to solve problems here, but maybe some more gravitas for the memories of the people that we've lost due to this pandemic. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Council Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would support the notion that Counselor Brooks offered there at the end about a moment of silence. You know, it's a big number and a growing number, unfortunately. And so I think our acknowledgement of it and respect for it would be a very appropriate gesture. So I have two items. The first one is highly technical, but it stems from my involvement with League of Oregon Cities Transportation Policy Committee. There is real bad news out of ODOT. They are suffering financially. So much so that the Highway Fund is looking at being bankrupt at some point between 2023 and 2024. So League of Oregon Cities, Association of Oregon Counties have been in communications with ODOT about how to basically trim some revenue that would otherwise go to the cities. And so they're asking for reduction from 94% to 90% in something called the STP Funds Exchange, which is money that goes from ODOT to local governments. And I know that none of you are, or I don't expect any of you are super technically aware of how ODOT's funded and how all this works. And I'm happy to forward the email that I've got to you folks. But they've asked for a response in a couple of days. And so if anybody's got real strong feelings about that one way or the other, just let me know and I'll get you the memo. And otherwise, Sherilyn, I'll work with you or whomever you want to designate to get our response back to League of Oregon Cities on that. Okay. The second item is, as I'm nearing the end of my term here, I experienced a moment of nostalgia the other day as I was looking through the voters pamphlet. And I thought, well, what did I put in my voters pamphlet statement? And so I went back and looked at it. And oddly enough, a number of things that are on there are things that we've accomplished. Transportation funding, you know, looking at our purse expenses and those types of things. But one thing that stuck out, and Frank and Nancy, you'll probably remember this vividly, in 2015, the council passed an ordinance changing some of the rights around the initiative process for citizen-sponsored initiatives. And one of those changes was to reduce the frequency of the ability of citizens to put initiative ballots or initiative measures on the ballot to only general elections. And while that is certainly a valid exercise of the city's home rule authority, state laws default provides for the opportunity to put those on both a primary and a general election ballot. So I am asking tonight for support from anyone who'd be willing to raise their hands to direct staff to prepare an amendment to our Twelton Municipal Code to provide for the ability to put citizen-sponsored initiatives on both primary and general election ballots.
All right. Folks have questions for Robert on that? Valerie, then Bridget.
I'm just supporting Robert.
Bridget.
He asked for a show of hands.
All right.
I'm fine. What I'd say is I'm fine with matching with what the state does. I think that's a good plan.
I think Maria had your hand up.
Oh, I'm just elaborate a little bit. I'm sorry. I'm not familiar with what you're, you were talking about, Robert.
Sure. So.
Raise my hand for something. So I'm just wondering.
Of course. And, and remember that this isn't a vote on the substance of the proposal. It's just to put the proposal in front of us. There'll be a proposed ordinance whenever it, if it gets on the agenda. So generally, a citizen can sponsor an initiative for the ballot by going out and collecting signatures and some jumping through some other technical hoops and then putting the measure to the city manager who does a review of it. Make sure it's legally copacetic and Sean would help with that. And so if somebody collects enough signatures to get an item on the ballot, say it's to, you know, fund the parks or whatever, then it would be put on the next ballot. But what we're, what our city ordinance now says is it wouldn't get on the ballot until November. And state law says that it can be on the ballot in May or November. And so all I'm asking is to allow for initiative petitions or ballot measures at this point to be put on both in May and in November, just to provide more opportunity for direct democracy.
That makes sense. Okay. I can, I can support that. Thank you.
Sherilyn.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Counselor Kellogg? I believe the code currently says that it's not just on November, but it's on the even numbered elections. Are you looking for a change to any, so even or odd? Or just at the primary and the general uneven elections?
So as I read, then this is code section 1-24-70, it says an initiative measure that qualifies for the ballot would be placed on the ballot at the next available statewide general election. And looking at the initiative manual yesterday, it indicates that there's a general and primary election dates, at least in 2021.
So your, the gist of your request is just to go back to matching what the state says?
Yes.
What was changed a few years ago?
Yes.
I'm in favor also, so. That's, I, that count five there. Haven't seen Nancy or Paul react yet. Go ahead, Nancy.
I have a, thanks. I have a comment. Yeah, I, I'm completely open to reopening that and taking a look at that. And thanks, Robert, for pointing out, like you and the mayor and I are starting to feel like council historians. Scary position. But I think part of the discussion around that change was the idea that at that time, you know, in 2015, that was a long time ago, but the voter turnout at that moment in time was very low, especially for primaries. And what we were trying to do is help funnel things that would have a big impact on the city to the, the elections that had larger turnout. So that more people, statistically or probability wise, would be able to be involved in making decisions for the city so that we didn't end up with, you know, an initiative that went to vote and we had, you know, super low turnout and not a lot of voter input on certain issues. So that was kind of the thought behind it. It wasn't meant to suppress or to be difficult. It was just to try to move matters of great importance to election periods where we had great voter interest. So we would have a better back and forth discussion about things. But yeah, I'm totally open to having more discussion on that because it's been a while and things have certainly changed in the last few years.
All right. So it looks like you got the support you need. So Sherilyn, get it on the calendar, I guess.
Just looking at Sean, are, are you clear on that?
Yes, I, I, I think I understand it. So it's going to be May, November of every year is, is what the change would be.
All right.
Yeah, my proposal would be just to add two words instead of the next available general election would be the next available primary or general election.
All right. Okay. So you have, Robert?
That is, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Council Pratt.
I attended a community conversations on use of police force policies, which was very interesting. And personally made me feel really good about all the efforts and care that our police force is putting in. But it was the first session, I think, will there be four sessions? And the, the first one was more the police telling us how they operate, giving us information. The next one's going to be on November 18th from six to seven. And it's going to be more frequently asked questions and taking questions from the people attending. So anybody interested in that, it's great. And it, I'm sure it will be on our Facebook page for the city. Then on Saturday, because we don't have a pumpkin regatta this year, we did our Community Police Foundation Duck Raffle in conjunction with the Prescription Takeback Event at the police parking lot. It was really cold. But we were fortunate to be connected with the Prescription Takeback Event that Twelton Together and some students of pharmacy from Oregon State, where they're doing a great job. And by the way, those wreaths that Cindy mentioned earlier are a super deal and they'll ship them for you. And so you can go to tweltontogether@gmail.com if you didn't see that, because they really are pretty cool to help with Stand Up Twelton. But the Duck Raffle is also going on. If you missed Saturday, you can go to tucpf.org. And why I think it's so important this year is that we're trying to fund for AEDs for the police cars. And as many of you know, our, our police officers are often our first responders. So it's really important to have these for the vehicles. So the tickets are $10 a piece or 11 for $100. And you have a chance to win $1,000. Thank you, those of you who have already bought tickets. And if you can, it'd be greatly appreciated. And also, oh yeah, I do, I want to say the moment of silence, I think is a wonderful idea. And also don't forget to vote. Please, if you're going to mail them, mail them by tomorrow. Otherwise, we have a beautiful newly painted blue ballot box at the library. Thanks.
Council Morrison.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, the, a couple of things. I attended the C4 Subcommittee Meeting a couple of weeks ago. And a letter was authorized by the committee to send out for this, supporting stiff funds for the project of transportation between Twelton and Oregon City in cooperation with Wilsonville, Lake Oswego and Westland. And I will say that it has been a very good partnership with Clackamas County. They've done an outstanding job of promoting it and working with everybody. Garrett has done an amazing job in working with Clackamas County and with Wilsonville and Lake Oswego and Westland in having everybody on the same page and moving forward on that. They are talking about, so they're talking about a 30-minute break during peak time, six to nine and four to seven. And then 60 minutes off-peak and 60 minutes on Saturday. Currently, no scheduled transportation on Sunday. We'll take what we can get. We'll, we'll work on it moving forward. Second, actually, I'll jump ahead here since Counselor Pratt just covered it. Yeah, Drug Takeback Day went really well on Saturday sponsored by, I was promoted by Twelton Together. It's actually sponsored by the DEA. It's a national program twice a year. A big shout out to Chief Steele and his Twelton Police Department and a couple of people who were there. And it went really well, although I agree with Counselor Pratt, I couldn't stay very long because my hands finally froze over. It was really, really cold. I want to give a shout out to, we, as you all know, we received notification of a couple of changes with staff. And Kim McMillan and Steve Koper, two outstanding promotions for both of them, well deserved, both extremely hard workers. We all know them. We just had Steve do a presentation today. Also, I was surprised that Jonathan was not already working with Don. So I'm really pleased to see that change. And for Garrett, a little more exposure for him in the way that he's now reporting up. And congrats to everybody and to all of them. I also attended the Twelton Community Conversation on Use of Force. I listened in. And again, a shout out to Chief Steele. I thought he did a really good job, very well presented. All the questions he had the answers for, and, and they were all good answers. I think his police department is really doing an outstanding job, which gets me to my final comment, which is it's, it's kind of a very sensitive thing to comment on because quite honestly, I'm not sure what on earth our Tiger Twelton School District is trying to do or what they're attempting to accomplish. I've attended two meetings with their community conversation. They keep referring to it as a partnership. I have no idea who they're in partnership with. It's certainly not the city of Twelton, in my personal opinion. And I know I've heard evidence from some others, third-party comments that the Twelton Police Department is not too pleased with what they're doing and has, has made that comment clear in conversations with them. And I, I don't, not going to comment on that. I will comment, though, that it is clearly Tiger Twelton School District is attempting to take data that doesn't show what they want to show and then move it around to do something. And I don't know what it is they want to do. And so it's really, really frustrating. They basically have a very, very small percentage of students who are uncomfortable with, in their words, armed police on campus. And you have an overwhelming number of students, parents and staff who are very comfortable with what the school resource officers do. And one of the school board members, Ben Bowman, made the point that as a Twelton High and he didn't know what the SROs were doing and that he didn't think clear picture of what they evolve with. So I personally asked 10 high school students, because out of them, I got three living in my house. So I personally asked ten high school students, because of them, I got three living in my house, and they all identified it. Everyone said the same comment, and that was that the school resources were there to help. And I think the message this Talton School, Tiger Twalton School District is the school resources have a purpose, a very good purpose. They do an amazing Officer Lemon, who's not is over, was mentioned in multiple by name as somebody who was exceptional. Again, what TTSB is doing, I don't really know. And but we have two more meetings, then be a minor, it's on the agenda, no date set for a city of Twalton or a joint session. And that will be a very interesting conversation. And you're all to listen in. Feel free to reach out to me if you need any additional information. Certainly, I'm a parent of three kids at school, and so I'm I'm involved in a lot of different ways. And I'll say about that.
All right. Appreciate you do that for us all and representing us on the committee. Council Reyes. Oh, Sean just had his hand up.
Yeah, sorry. I apologize. I just wanted to go back and clarify just on the election piece because the the primary and and general elections are in even numbered years. I just want to clarify that that's exactly that's what you want brought back.
Looking at Councilor Kellogg, since it's his motion. Thumbs up from him.
Yeah.
All right. Going to a regularly scheduled programming, back to Council Reyes.
Well, not a lot going on with me on as far as committees or any anything that's pressing of our me my meetings for my committees. So but I do want to say I do like what Councilor Brooks said about having a moment of silence for our the individuals that have left us because of COVID. And also, I want to always give a shout out to the police officers in Twalatin because they are great. And Chief Steel always has an answer for everything. I've been around when he has have that has been asked tough questions. And my gosh, he's really good at making sure that 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 the police force is that he answers the right the the questions because it is true, because our police is is really a great, we we have a great police off, I guess, team or department here in Twalatin. And I just want to always give him a shout out for that. I've experienced in different ways being around him, his team, and they've always been really, really great and treated people with respect and on and integrity. So I like that. And so I just want to say that. That's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Grimes.
Thank you. Yeah, I I definitely support Council Brooks's idea of a respectful moment to remember all the lives that have been lost through COVID. I mean, it was just a generational loss really in society. And I think that it's very sad. And I think that it is a very sad and enormous loss of loved ones and wisdom and you know, loss of ability to give back to a society when everyone is just reaching the age of wisdom. And I think that's very sad. But yes, I definitely support that. The police department, every time we bring it up, I it's such a source of pride for me and I think for the city that with everything going on in the world, I think that their behavior, their commitment to the community, their deportment has just been stellar. And I think, you know, they've dealt with some really difficult situations with wisdom and grace. And I just can't say how proud I am of the police department and Chief Steel and his leadership. I think has been fantastic. And then, yeah, I'd just like to remind everyone, please vote. And yes, we have a beautiful Dropbox by the library. Just swing on through, drop it off, be on your way. Just takes a minute. So congratulations to everyone who voted and encouragement for everyone who hasn't voted yet. Get out there and make it count. So that's my contribution for tonight.
Right. Thanks, Nancy. Just a few things. On the thirteenth, myself and some representative, Councilor Kellogg, Sherilyn and Steve joined in a multi-city meeting to discuss Stafford. Just to check in, we met with representatives of Lake Oswego and Westland via Zoom for a year and check in on where we were at with Stafford and the question of Stafford and a three-party IGA. We'll be meeting again in December after the election to do a final year, a year-end check in and plan a meeting in beginning of next year when we have some new mayors and some new city councils to continue to continue the discussion about Stafford and how we address the development of Stafford and the different ideas that are out there about Stafford and how to use that land. As multiple folks mentioned already, the city held its conversation number one on police use of force. I want to do a big, very much thank you to Megan. Megan George was instrumental in putting this together. And she spent a lot of time on it, working with myself, Chief Steel and Sherilyn. So kudos to her. As was mentioned, the next session is on the eighteenth of November. In the meantime, we encourage folks to go to the website and review the video of the meeting. And then also get a chance, go ahead and download the eight pages of the Twaltons Policy three hundred, which is the Use of Force Policy. Look at it. I have I've marked it up. And any questions you have, please email them to Megan at the city. What we're hoping and anticipating is that residents email Megan with their questions. So Chief Steel can have as many answers as available that night. Of course, people could still ask questions during the one hour session. But some of the more technical ones are tougher ones. Please email. I've got about six or seven already that I gotta get shot over to Megan. So please email Megan George at the city with your questions that you'd like Chief Steel to answer. On the sixteenth of October, Washington County had their Housing Advisory Committee Forum. And the topic was housing instability in a pandemic. They had different representatives from Washington County Government and Community Associations present on the challenge we're all seeing right now, folks being displaced from housing or in the future being displaced from housing when rent waivers and mortgages are no longer waived. Twalton was mentioned because of SEPA's development of a future site down in Passau Creek, about a hundred or so units that they're working with the county and metro with the funding to make that happen. Some eye opening economic stats I sent out to you folks with the impact as we've seen with Aquila of the disparate impact of COVID on women in the workforce. And how a lot of women are taking a brunt of it and having to remove themselves in workforce. And we're seeing that across the country. And, you know, it's something that we need to deal with and try to fix as soon as possible. On the nineteenth, the MMC had the Metro Metro Mayor's Consortium has several subcommittees which focus on legislative priorities. On that day, the subcommittee that focuses on economic development, education and workforce development, MET, which I'm a member. Now I'm now the chair of the subcommittee. So I'm chairing the subcommittee for Economic Development, Education and Workforce Training for the MMC. We were detailed with the job of coming up with legislature priorities for the twenty twenty-one session. We came up with three. But when we mashed all the priorities together for all the different subcommittees, we came up with like twenty-one of them, which really doesn't work. So right now, the Metro Mayors are trying to trim the list down to about five priorities that we will go down to Salem with to we're looking forward to them, their dress in the twenty twenty-one session. We're doing a Doodle Poll right now to whittle down the myriad of priorities. Of course, the number one priority is COVID nineteen economic relief and fixing the devastated economy we're all experiencing right now. On the twentieth, you know, attended the virtual breakfast, the Chamber had their key leader breakfast virtually this year. Again, some really good economic reporting of our existing conditions and a forecast. There was no surprises there. It just hopefully it's not as gloomy as we were forecasted in the future. But we'll see what happens with the twenty twenty-one session with the Oregon Legislature and how fast our economy can rebound. Ideally, once there is a COVID shot sometime in hopefully ideally keep fringe cross in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. On the twenty-second, I just mentioned before, we had the full meeting of the Metro Mayor's Consortium. But in the afternoon was a super interesting one. I'll take a minute or so to discuss. That was Greater Portland Inc., you know, we're members of the Small Cities Consortium of GPI. And they had two realtors or brokers present. One was industrial. What what's going on industrial tenants and what's going on with retail? One of them, you can predict how well retail is going. But what was interesting on the industrial tenants that ninety to ninety-five percent of the Portland Metro industrial tenants are still paying their rents. The it seems to be the smaller businesses that are one suffering, no surprise there because of the impacts of the economy. Demand for industrial sites is exceeding capacity still. Cities like Canby and Ridgefield are experiencing rapid growth in industrial areas because they have ready to go sites, which means all the infrastructure is ready there. And the builders and the companies come in and can rapidly develop a site. And that's one of the key things they wanted to pass on. This is an initiative Salem is doing right now to have your city be ready so that an industrial site is can be rapidly built within a year. That's what they're looking for. Of course, you have to have that land and be ready to go and have the money to invest in infrastructure that you don't know how long you get the return on. Rents continue to go up, vacancies are continuing to go down. And they're up to seventy cents a square foot right now for industrial space. A key thing for us, we've talked about this a lot with Jonathan, is every city is looking for that ideal kind of industrial manufacturing site to be developed or company come in. You know, the e-commerce, high tech kind of thing that in reality that you for every one of those, there are thirty companies that do distribution that pay just as much as those high tech sites, if not more. And now with the increasing complexity of distribution facilities, their equipment is just as valuable as a high tech facility. So their recommendation was, don't be don't turn your nose out at a distribution client or a distribution tenant or distribution land development deal and try to hold out for a high tech one. Because right now, for every unique manufacturer, you're thirty e-commerce slash distribution companies wanting the site somewhere. So that was I thought eye opening. Much different situation, we know, in retail. It's not just in the Portland area that retail sites are suffering. They're seeing about ninety percent of office rents and retail rents are still being paid. But they're worried about lease renewals that when leases are up, people might just say, you know what, bye bye, walk away. And what they're seeing is there's a exodus from downtown Portland Core to the burbs. And Wilsonville and Twalton was specifically mentioned as desirable sites for smaller professional services companies, be it attorneys or wealth management companies to recite their offices into the burbs. One, because of tax or lower taxes, and two, best basically where these folks are living now. So they don't want to drive into Portland anymore. What was interesting here, and we might be running out of time depending who wins the election, opportunity zones were discussed and that this is a terrific time for cities to take advantage of opportunity zones because the investment money that's out there. But we'll have to wait till November third to see if opportunity zones will exist in the future, depending who becomes president. And I think that's it. One thing that was kind of interesting was big, as I was mentioning, people leaving downtown that the big news was, you know, Adidas and Daimler are leaving Montgomery Park. They're just getting out and going to the burbs. And they're concerned when Nike fully builds out its campus out in Beaverton that all that space that's offsite, they're going to, you know, basically terminate those leases. So not a good time to be a retail slash office broker. And then that's about it. Again, people said before, remember to vote. One thing that people haven't said, remember the Dropbox in front of the library is both for Washington County and Clackamas County. That's actually for any county. The Elections Office will get your ballot, be it Clattsville County or Columbia County, they will get it to there. But be sure to vote early. You don't want to get caught in lines or traffic. So if you've made your decision, just fill out that ballot, get it in the mail by Wednesday. If not, if you need a little more time, make sure to get to the Twalton Library and drop it off prior to eight o'clock on November third. I'm envisioning it might be a line, so get there early. Any other thing, anything else for the evening?
Real, real quick, Mayor, you 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 triggered a word for me. I am so sorry, Megan. I forgot to mention your name and your addition promotion to Megan George was also should have been included in that list. And I skipped over her name, and I'm very, very, very sorry.
She has. Look at the thumbs up. All right, Megan. All right. Anything else? All right. I have a motion to close the meeting this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Good evening. Have a safe and happy night.